I'd like to welcome everyone to the administrators' meeting for May. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Leitner.
Here.
Commissioner Lechka.
Here.
Commissioner Rice.
Here.
Commissioner Duckham.
Here.
Commissioner Alexander.
Present.
Commissioner Mahoney.
Commissioner Palachek.
Here.
Commissioner Elwell.
Here.
Chairman Chatwell.
I beg everyone's pardon, I took some cold medicine before I got here and it's got me kind of spacey, so, public comment, first chance for public comment? Seeing none? Administrator Overton, would you like to take over?
I would love to, it would be my pleasure. At this time, we'd like to ask Brett Boyd to step up to the podium and make his presentation on harness racing. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, thank you very much for the opportunity. Just real briefly, take the opportunity and introduce myself. I'm Brett Boyd, I'm originally from Hillsdale, Michigan, I now call Jonesville, Michigan, home. I live on a family horse farm with my wife Brandy and our five children. And I've always had a passion for horse racing. As a young child, my folks were active in horse racing, so I spent some hours at Jackson Harness Raceway. And I've always had a great passion for the business. A few years ago, as we all know, Jackson Harness Raceway closed. And I think for most folks, maybe even in the county and in horse racing, we thought maybe it would never open its doors again. But I'm here today to present, I believe, an extremely positive possibility for a partnership with Jackson County. And just to give you a brief overview of what's transpired since 2008. In 2008, with the closing of Jackson Raceway, there was a lot of factors that created the closing of the track. Over the last few years, our industry has been in decline. The horsemen have been trying to work with the racetracks rather unsuccessfully to make a push legislatively, to make a change that could alter the path of horse racing in Michigan. Many of the surrounding states, Ohio, Indiana, Pennsylvania, and New York, have added additional attractions to their racetracks and now the racing industry is now thriving again in these states. In recent times, the horsemen have truly desired the opportunity to control their own destiny. We have been frustrated by the racetrack's mentality of doing business the way they've always done business. And we saw glimmers of hope here in Jackson. We saw a racetrack that was attracting around 800 to 900 people on a Saturday night, all of a sudden, over two years, started attracting crowds of over 4,000. And how did we do that? We did it by promoting our product. We did it about in creating an atmosphere that's friendly for families. And really educating our fans and talking about our stars. And we saw some incredible momentum. Jackson Raceway was on the cover of the Jackson Citizen Patriot. It was on the cover of national magazines and publications. A track that looked like it was going to disappear suddenly was attracting large crowds. We had some of the largest crowds in the country when it come to horse racing. Unfortunately, things did not work out with the ownership. As you folks know, 90% of the ownership at Jackson Harness Raceway was owned out of state. It was owned by Mountaineer Gaming. Their number one focus was getting slot machines in that racetrack. And when Firekeepers was only months away from opening, they pulled out and went back to West Virginia. In the last few months, I've spent the last eight years as President of the Michigan Harness Horsemen's Association. I know we have a lot of horsemen in this county. We still have a tremendous amount of horsemen in the state. And they have a desire to control our entertainment package to our fans. They saw in Jackson what we could do. We've went to our racetracks in Michigan, Hazel Park, North Phil Downs, Sports Creek, and asked them to be more family-friendly, to be more of a show. We're in the entertainment business, not in the gambling business. And unfortunately, we haven't got a lot of cooperation there. It shifted gears to what is the possibility that the horsemen could control their own destiny, that we could put on our show and we could get back to Jackson where we'd love to be? And it all started with a meeting with me and Denise about six months ago. I went in her office and I kind of laughed, but on the wall is one of my favorite quotes about achieving the impossible. And I believe we're this close to achieving the impossible. And that impossible is having live racing back at Jackson Harness Raceway to the benefit of our county, to the benefit of the local businesses here in Jackson, and ultimately to the benefit of our horsemen. We have a lot of horsemen in Michigan that unfortunately right now have to drive to Hoosier Park in Anderson, Indiana, to Sciota Downs in Columbus, Ohio, to Mohawk Raceway in Guelph, Ontario, Canada. A lot of these horsemen that would love to do business here in Jackson would love to be able to attract their friends and neighbors to come to the races. I have a corporation called Brett Boyd Racing Incorporated. It was designed to be a breeding, training, and racing of harness horses. And I've kind of changed the focus of that incorporation with the opportunity to be the meat license holder through the Gaming Control Board. We are at a point right now where through unbelievable volunteerism, unbelievable community support, we are at a point now where if the Board of Commissioners can approve, if you folks can approve moving forward, to apply, reapply for the track license that you folks owned previously. And I could apply for the meat license, that we can have five, maybe six, potentially seven, live racing days at Jackson Fairgrounds this year. And our goal is to build a partnership to have 40 live racing events in 2015. We believe in our ability to drive large crowds at Jackson Harness Raceway. We saw how we did it before. I was the track announcer in the last couple of years, 2007, 2008. You know, for all the years, I always called the races from way upstairs and nobody ever saw us. And I said to Dan Rakitin, "I want to get intimate with the crowd as far as get down in the crowd, show them the equipment, show them our horses, bring our drivers up, let's start giving free t-shirts." And it was a partnership and it started to get incredible momentum. And I believe in this industry. I believe it can be great for Jackson. I also believe that there's a lot of sunshine on the horizon. There is a potential for advances in technology to help the racetracks bring our business to our customers. There is a tremendous amount of support in the legislature. I mean tremendous. Right here in this county, Mike Knoffs has been a spokesman for our industry. Mike Shirkey has been a spokesman for our industry. Ken Kurtz, Bruce Caswell, Earl Poleski. I mean, these gentlemen understand how racing is not just racing, it's the agricultural component. I had the opportunity to visit with Dick Posthumus last year on Derby Day at Hazel Park Raceway. And I asked Dick, I said, "Why is our governor..." You know, he talks about pure Michigan and economic gardening. "Why is our governor a little bit apathetic about our industry?" And he said to me, he goes, "Well, I believe he thinks it's all about wagering." And I said to Dick, I said, "Tomorrow night, I'm going to put a horse on the racetrack at Hazel Park. He's going to be on the track for five minutes. They're going to wager on that horse for five minutes. The rest of the week, 999th, 1,000th of a week, he's driving Michigan economies. Insurance, hay, grain, trucks, trailers, he is driving the Michigan economy." I think that had an impression on Dick. But long story short, I believe in the agricultural component. I believe that at some point in time, our legislature is going to realize that this industry is something that we need to take a better look at. I believe right now that we can make Jackson Raceway a viable, sustainable business for Jackson. Obviously, it's very difficult. Racetracks around the country are going out of business if they don't have something extra. But I'm poised and ready to do whatever it takes to help get this business up and running, make it something that Jackson County can be proud of, make it something that can drive additional traffic. You know, right now on a Saturday night, a lot of folks that want to have a little fun and maybe wager a little money, don't come to Jackson. They go to Battle Creek, they go to Mount Pleasant, they go to Detroit. I'm telling you, they can come to Jackson. They can do business here. We can put on a first-class, family show that's good for everybody. The partnership, and I apologize, I'm not maybe very well-versed in some of my wording when I say city or county. I know you folks are in the driver's seat, and I'm looking for a partner. I'm looking for a partner to take a building that's basically vacant 51 weeks out of the year and turn it into an attraction that's good for you, it's good for me, it's good for our horsemen, it's good for our community. So, this is an extremely complicated process going through the license application and this whole process to get up and running, but I'm all ears. I'm here to be a partner, I'm here to create a partnership that you folks can be proud of. And I'm open to any questions, and I think more than anything, time is of the essence. We want to race here this year. I'll be honest with you, I would love to race before the Jackson County Fair, but I don't want our fair board getting after me. They've been phenomenal. Denise, the whole fair board, Mr. Overton, Mike Shirkey, there's been a lot of collaboration. I talked to the Gaming Control Board yesterday. They are waiting and willing to take our application and try to get us racing this year. There are no guarantees, I just want to make sure that there's a lot of transparency, that there are no guarantees that we can get 40 days of racing in Jackson next year. The horsemen are committed to it. The Michigan Harness Horsemen's Association intends to have a contract with us to have 40 days of racing at Jackson. There are other track operators in the state at North Phil Downs and Hazel Park that don't like this plan. They do not like the idea that the horsemen are going to try to control their own destiny. I anticipate roadblocks, I anticipate they're going to do everything they can to stop us. But I don't believe they can. We have members of the legislature that will stand by us and uphold the current law. By law, we can have 40 days of racing here next year. But the other track operators, I just want to be upfront and tell you, the other track operators are not real happy with Brett Boyd. They're not real happy with the horsemen wanting to control their own destiny. They would rather back us in the corner and tell us that we have to pay large entry fees to race. We're looking for an option, we're looking to Jackson, and we're looking for a partner. So, I'm open to any questions, and I'm sure there's lots of them.
Brett, we had the luxury of having the packet ahead of time, and I kind of zoomed through that last night, but your business model is based on acknowledging you're going to lose money in the first year and plan on making it up the second year essentially with the 40 races, is that it?
Yes. There's just considerable investments that need to be made to get the technology set, to get our skill set in place to manage the business, to just improvements around the facility, to the hub rail, to the front fence. This year, I think it's probably an impossibility, but I don't want to say that because I believe that we can drive a lot of folks to the track and we can generate some income there. The horsemen have vouched up to about $75,000 in their revenue to help get us to this point. Ballpark right now, the bids are still coming in and things are coming in, it's probably about a quarter million dollars to get us up and running. So, there is a possibility, but I think, you know, just being conservative, I think we're probably going to, you know, losing the neighborhood of $50,000 in year one. But we're willing to make, I'm willing to make that investment because I see bigger things in the future.
And then part of the proposal would also include operation of the restaurant there at the grandstands?
Yes, I would really, what I would like to do is create a, have you guys create a lease agreement that we sit down and we can live with. My vision for Jackson Raceway is we create a restaurant, sports bar, entertainment attraction that's not just racing, that people could come in there and have lunch potentially, watch the Tiger game on TV, and enjoy a good sandwich. What it was before is not really my vision. I mean, my vision is I want to create a destination. I know because it's your folks' property and there's obvious some limitations, but I see bigger and better things. I mean, I believe we could put a very good restaurant in there, potentially even some bigger expansion than what we did previously. But in the beginning, at least get that restaurant back into condition, make it something we're proud of, and that we feel we can start attracting a lot of folks to come to the track.
Thank you, Brett. In your model, you mention educate, excite, and entertain. With that in mind, you also have mentioned several times the creating a family-friendly environment. Could you give me some specific examples of how you would educate and this would become a family-friendly environment, please?
You bet. We started to do a lot of that in 2008, where we had the kids call the start of the race. We'd get a bunch, 40 or 50 kids around, and my favorite thing to say when they're coming around the turn was, "Here they come." And we'd get the kids involved, and then we'd start bringing up pieces of equipment. In harness racing, our horses wear a lot more equipment than they do in thoroughbred racing. Thoroughbred racing, you've got a bridle, you've got a saddle, you've got a jockey. In harness racing, there is so many pieces of equipment that are used. The goal is to keep your horse straight. Like a car, the straighter you can keep your car, the faster it'll go, the better it'll steer. Same thing with a harness horse. So, we use blinds and boots and all kinds of equipment, and we started bringing that up, and we'd educate the folks. They would want to know, "Why does that horse have a white little cotton thing over his nose?" Well, the reason the horse has that thing over his nose is that's called a shadow roll. And at Jackson, with our light poles and the sun, sometimes those shadows cast across the track. And me and you both know that's a shadow. But horses sometimes don't know what that is, and they have a tendency to jump over a shadow. So, we would really look at educating our fans on, you know, how to bet, and what kind of bets, and what kind of equipment, and why is that driver doing this? So our people are, understand what's happening out there, because it is extremely complex industry. The other thing I really would love to do, and I know it was in the previous leases, that barn 19 is untouchable, but I would love, when I see barn 19, I see the biggest opportunity on the fairgrounds. I would love to have one of our retired standardbred horses out there, one of our best horses out there, that kids could go right up to and touch. I'd love to put some bounce houses and pony rides in that area, in the green grass over there. I don't want to park cars there. I want to create something to educate our fans and make them feel like, hey, this is fun. So, I think there's so many, Julie, there's so many opportunities that we could do a better job of educating. Unfortunately, our other racetracks, with no disrespect, our other racetracks, they just turn on the lights, they expect people to come. That model doesn't work. We have got to educate, we've got to entertain them. We've got to excite them, and we know we can put a product out there that's going to excite our customer base. So, I see some huge opportunities with the fairgrounds potentially to get, so our fans can get closer with our horses and with our horsemen, and helping that process.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner Alexander, yes?
In your plan, and in speaking, you've mentioned the Pure Michigan campaign. Can you give me some background of what you would foresee their involvement be in this process?
Well, I haven't made any official contact with Pure Michigan, but I wrote several letters to Governor Snyder, because I believe that the horse racing industry is as pure Michigan as you get. This morning, I was feeding at my farm to get to this appointment, and all of a sudden, I've got a mare that foled seven days early. But you know what? That is, that's what Pure Michigan's all about. Coming to my family farm, seeing green space, seeing the horses. So, I think there's, when it comes to the industry of horse racing, yes, we race. You know, my horses that race, they race two minutes once a week, sometimes twice a week, or excuse me, twice a month. But the rest of the time, our farms in Jackson County, Hillsdale, Runaway Branch, they are absolute pure Michigan, with green space, a lot of labor-intensive work, and the beauty of horses. And I think it's something that we can be proud of.
Mr. Overton, the only other thing is I'm not sure how the presentation's going to work here. Will we be hearing from someone from Denise or from Chair Lechka in regard to the implications with Fair Week, Storage, American One Event Center, current calendar, and the Night Lights contract and those issues? How will that all fall together?
That's a lot of questions.
I guess just simply the implications to the fairground and how that will affect this?
Yes.
I just want to be clear on what our boundaries are, basically. I think, I mean, it's my understanding that this full board's responsibility isn't the details of the timings and stuff like that, it's just basically the authorization to be able to enter into this lease. Is that right, or am I wrong? Or...
Well, the county does own the property, own the property there, so any contracts and stuff, but yet, because they're not really, this is not part of the fair, you know, but on the other hand, traditionally, the fair board has managed the grounds down there. So, there is, you know, some gray area there, I suppose. But I personally, my personal belief would be that it would be with the county, not the fair board. There's a whole lot of unanswered questions, and I know I have a few questions myself here, looking at your plan, but does any other commissioners have questions? Commissioner?
Yeah, I'm concerned about, the fair board, especially the director, Denise, has done a wonderful job of getting a year-round program down there. Because when the horse track pulled out before, the fair was about it. And Denise has worked long and hard. I'm concerned about interfering with how we're going to coexist down there. And I don't know, that's a question for...
Well, we're partners, and you know, talk about the America One building, you know, you folks put it in your lease of what, how you want us to manage our business, we'll do it. When it comes to the Lights Festival, our anticipation is we would race from May, the first week of May, until the end of September, to keep, you know, limit our obstruction of anything with the Lights program. We want to be a partner on this. You folks tell us what we need to do, as long as we can work together, and I'm sure we can. We're here hoping to work with you folks, and whatever those parameters are, we're willing to do it.
Do you envision, what nights would you be racing?
My vision for this year is we'd race Saturday nights only, potentially five, as is in your document, with the willingness of the fair board potentially adding two more additional Saturdays to get us up to seven, which would end the end of, the middle of October, the 10th of October, I believe. But at a minimum, at least five, hopefully. And then next year, race from May to September, on Fridays and Saturday nights, with obviously whatever we deem is appropriate to be out of the fairgrounds for you folks to conduct the fair, and that we're not an interruption to that. So, what I had looked at originally was 12, starting on the first weekend in May, we'd race 12 consecutive Fridays and Saturdays. We then would be off for a two- or three-week window, and then race eight more Friday/Saturday weekends, for a total of 40 days.
Okay, then, would, do you envision that the grandstand is yours to use for those 40 days, or could Denise book a concert or other activities? Will we both use a facility, or are you thinking it's your facility to use?
I am extremely hopeful that there's not going to be a seat left. But no, I'm willing, if you folks had a concert, or we could, you know, we talked a little bit in the fair board about an outing, I think it was for American One, for a talent show or something. Hey, we would love to partner with that, where we could have the talent show right during the live racing, and it would make for a larger crowd. So, we're going to be cooperative in everything we can do, but to answer your question, Phil, I really truly hope to put 4,000 people in that grandstand on every Saturday night. And I think we can do it. I don't think that's too much.
Sorry, sorry. If Denise had a concert, the fair board had a concert, to book on a Thursday night, Wednesday night, Friday night, is she going to still have the flexibility to do that, or you're going to, we're going to interfere with your accessories you need to run the race on a Saturday night?
If you folks, if we can put it in the lease that, you know, we can at least get 90 days notice, that we can make other arrangements, we will be very cooperative in helping you folks do whatever you need to do. As long as we have some time to react and prepare and market, so our folks understand when our races are and when they're not, we will be cooperative with that.
Okay. A lot of this will hinge on Denise's opinion and my book, so, she's, like, she's done a great job promoting activities down there, and I don't want to get off track. Thank you.
I believe Commissioner Rice had his hand up.
How's it working? Everybody's glad they can hear me now. You keep speaking of partnership, and obviously, the more I listen to you, you are truly advocating for pretty much what Jackson County would do to help you out with this partnership. Obviously, a partnership in some respects has to have some equal parts, I would think, but certainly you are very compassionate about this. Certainly, in terms of partnership, obviously, we have a fairgrounds, we have a facility, obviously, that you're seeking to utilize, and obviously, ultimately, at some... obviously, that you're seeking to, to utilize, um, and, uh, obviously, ultimately, at some point, you're going to be looking for the, um, support of this board, um, um, or potentially the, you may end up getting the non-support, uh, obviously, I don't have that answer. But, uh, so, explain to me, if you could, what you would consider our role as partners with you, and, uh, do you foresee that there's any obligations on Jackson County's part, um, in terms of financial on this matter?
Um, my goal was to, um, limit the risk or exposure to Jackson County. Um, I want this to be a revenue producer, not a, not a cost, um, producer. I, um, I would like to talk potential details about putting some drainage down the stretch, um, utilizing some of the clay that's currently on the track, and, uh, we do have the hubrail around the remainder of the racetrack, um, but it has been proven that it's safer for horsemen that race on a track that doesn't have a hubrail. Um, so I, I would like to talk about some kind of partnership potentially, um, to put drainage down the stretch, um, and utilize that clay that's currently on the track that we have to take off, so there could be, you know, potentially, some exposure there, but even if, even if we're not able to obtain that this year, we plan to repair the hubrail, and the goal is that there won't be any cost or exposure for Jackson County. Um, we want to invest in that facility, um, from a, uh, from repairing the hubrail, which I think could be beneficial for you folks at fairtime, um, to repairing, um, and doing some maintenance to the front fence, uh, the security fence that fans look over the track, I mean, it's in really pretty, pretty bad, uh, it's, it needs some major attention, um, so we, we intend to fix that, make that beautiful, uh, not only for the racing, but for your folks' fair. Um, and as far as, you know, the partnership, I'm, I, I want you folks to dictate the terms. Um, we're, we're thankful for the opportunity, and we're willing to work within your terms, um, to make, Denise has done a wonderful job down there, and in no way, shape, or form does, uh, is bringing horse racing, they don't want to inhibit the, the other possibilities that there are at Jackson. Um, but to answer your cost, uh, question, I'd like to open that facility this year without any cost of Jackson, um, and, uh, in the future, if we can be successful this year, uh, with a plan to invest 250, 300, maybe $400,000 into that facility, um, that would enhance the opportunities that you folks may be able to rent it, uh, outside of a racing season, or, uh, Sunday through, you know, Thursday potentially, so, um, we want to limit the cost, we just are thankful for the opportunity to, uh, to have your facility, if we can come to terms.
In your information here, you got down here, uh, it, it implies that you already have investors, um, that are going to help out with at least $250,000 at some point, so you're telling us you have those people in place?
Um, I'm personally, uh, willing to invest that money. There are several folks, um, that have approached me about the opportunity to invest in this. Um, to be really honest, uh, that's, uh, I have family businesses, I'm not, I'm not really, I never ran an operation where I would look for outside investors. Um, in this particular situation, um, there are a lot of folks that have an interest in, they see kind of the vision that we can bring folks to Jackson, we can make this a sustainable business, but I'm personally willing, uh, uh, to invest 250,000 into the opportunity. Thank you.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner Mahoney?
Thank you, Brett. It's, um, good to see you again.
Thank you.
And, um, my only concern, I believe you have, um, discussed, um, in the past, there were many problems, um, regarding where we could park, and, you know, if we were having an event, if we could park in our own lot, and how much of it, you know, was yours and ours. I'm happy to hear that you're talking about a partnership so that it belongs to us, we're loaning it to you, and if that's going to be the understanding, I think we will be able to, I certainly would support a partnership that would lend to that kind of agreement, that we're in a partnership together, but at the same time, when that contract is written, I wouldn't expect that Denise would plan a concert on a night that you already have harness racing, unless that could be in, um, the American One building, like you said, and it would be a go, you know, a win-win for you and for us, so.
Yeah, and we would be very interested in that. Um, I included some of the stuff in our, in the packet, but a lot of the racetracks that are successful right now, they do just that. They, they have a concert, um, they may have their races a little bit early, right after the races are over, they have a concert, right after the concert's over, they have fireworks, and they create a, an attraction to bring a lot of folks there. And in, in reference to the parking, um, I know previously, we didn't have the opportunity to utilize the lot behind the grandstand, but I see that as a huge opportunity to take some pressure off of the American One parking. Um, obviously, we don't want to be seen as a hindrance to, um, to those folks that have, uh, rented those facilities, so as long as it's clearly marked, I will assure you, I will have people that will make sure that those folks get their parking, um, and if we can have access to the parking lot behind the grandstand, um, that would be phenomenal, um, because we really intend on bringing a lot of folks back. I mean, Denise said to me, one of the first meetings, is she still gets calls, um, uh, that says, you know, is, is the track going to race this year, or when are they racing? So, I think we still have a great market here, and we, we hope to bring them to, bring them to Jackson. Thank you.
Any other commissioners? If not, I will ask a few questions. Thus far, I've spent a probable at least two hours listening or speaking with Mr. Boyd, and, uh, it, and I'm going to be frank, uh, the plan has changed what I have in my possession now to what we originally spoke of, and I'm sure it's a, you know, it's always been chang, changing as information comes, but you've gone from two races to five, and I just heard you say potentially seven this year. That seems very aggressive at this point, given the amount of, of details and work that needs to be accomplished. When is it that you would need a decision by this body, or the county?
I, I, I would need a decision, um, I would like to have a decision in the next 30 days. I would really like a decision prior to that, and the only reason why is, um, we have the applications to complete, I'm sure the Gaming Control Board is going to have numerous, um, questions for us, and, um, I, I just want to make sure my ducks are in a row, and, and to answer your question about going from five to seven, I think we originally talked about two, um, we feel confident that if we can be ready for August 23rd, we can be ready for additional opportunities, too, and I just believe that the more days that we can race, is the more days that we can bring people to Jackson and drive economies here.
Part of the concern is that-
Absolutely. We, we, we have a army of volunteers, and, and we are prepared, uh, to do whatever it takes. Mike, uh, I know you and me don't, have only known each other for a couple of weeks, but I can assure you, um, that we will get it done, um, and we'll do whatever it takes on our side to make that happen. And, and I, I appreciate that. I, I think, um, when it comes to specifics within the business plan to costs, a lot of those costs are coming in right now, they're anticipated costs, I'm very comfortable with, we're going to be in the neighborhood that this is, this is at, and then, you know, from a risk versus reward standpoint for this board and for this county, the risks are few, the rewards are plenty. Um, when it comes to the, uh, the rush, I don't think it's a rush as much as we just need someone, I need someone to work with, to fill out the necessary paperwork, so we can sit down with the Gaming Control Board, and, um, that is the only cost exposure to this board, to this county. Then there's the potential, uh, revenue from grant, there's the potential of a future partnership with, with our horsemen and with me, that can bring a viable business to Jackson. So, I understand what you're saying, but my goal in this business plan was to limit the risks, and, and I guess I would ask you to a, ask yourself the question, what, what is the positives and what are the potential negatives of moving forward, and I, and I'm confident that, um, we can assist in that, in the process of that application, and that there can be positives, and I guess, Mike, more than anything, with little risk, and, and I'm guarantee, I'm willing to make that investment today. You want me to write a check to Jackson County to lease that facility for two or five days? I'm willing to put the money on the table right now, and then let me prove to this board, and prove to this county, that we can be an asset to Jackson. Um, but I, 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 I strongly encourage you to consider moving forward now, because I, it gives us opportunities next year. If we don't get a license this year, 2014, we won't be able to apply for a track license or dates in 2015, which means that harness racing and the, what I envision at Jackson would not be a possibility, potentially, without a, a lot of extra work until potentially 16.
Well, I, I guess I don't understand, so you have to have a license this year in order to race in 15?
It, well, if we have a license by September 1, we have to apply for our dates for next year.
Okay.
And our horsemen want to call Jackson Raceway their home. If we do not get this done this year, then we will basically be forced to sign an agreement with one of our other existing tracks, and, uh, and quite honestly, the, the opportunity will be significantly diminished.
Well, I guess it really comes down to what, what's the board's interest here? Uh, I, because in order, for me to be comfortable, we're going to have to spend a significant amount of time with Mr. Boyd and some of his folks, educating ourselves on, on harness racing, what needs to happen, exactly what needs to happen down at the racetrack, or the fairgrounds and so forth, and the cost implications, and how it affects our other partners, like American, you know, American One Credit Union and some of those shows that we have coming up with the Kennel Club, and there's a whole bunch of variables here that would need to be really closely looked at.
Absolutely. Just so you know, Mr. Overton, um, a lot of those requirements are, won't be the counties. Um, the counties will be the racetrack, will just, the lease with me and the, and the contract. All the other requirements of racing fall on the meat licensee, which is me, so the responsibilities of the county would be simply to fill, to complete the application and complete a lease with, with my organization. Outside of that, we're the ones that bear the burden of responsibility on all the other factors that have to happen, um, to move forward.
Thank you. First, I would ask, Commissioner Lightner?
Um, you had already asked basically what our board's position is on this, and correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, I thought that our number one priority in Jackson County was economic development, and I feel like we've known about this for a few months, and, um, to me, and obviously, reading through this and seeing the different things, yeah, there's some details that are different than what they were a few months ago, but time is of the essence, and I don't think we should just stand around and stall because we got to work out dates. Well, that's what Denise's job is. Her job is to, you know, coordinate these events, because she's the operations manager. Now, I, I, in talking to her yesterday, know that there's dates in September that just aren't going to work, it's not going to fly this year, I mean, just because of cleaning up the barns, stuff like that, um, and then with the storage, because she's already established, uh, winter storage business. Um, but my position is, I think we should just at least try to move forward with some type of authorization to let him establish licensing, just because time is of the essence, and we all know it's slow, but I don't think that's a reason for us to be slow. I'm just saying.
I know it might slow the process down, but I would like to see Denise and you sit down and work out a schedule that would work for both of you with restrictions in there, that, that will not interfere with the development of our year-round business at the fairgrounds, and then it would come back to us, and it's going to slow it down, and come back to us with Denise's recommendation on what would work, and, and then that's something I think we could look at approving in my eyes, but there's going to have to be some restrictions, she's worked long and hard to get the fair activity, fairground activities where they are today, and my fear is, it would interfere with what she's doing, so if you can coordinate with Denise and get her 100% blessing in, in what restrictions you'll have to live with and, and such, um, I don't know if you can do it in two weeks or a month, or what it would take, but, I mean, if you could have it done in a week, and we could maybe bring it up for, as our new business at next, or this month's Board of Commission meeting, possibly, if that's proper, but it may take another month, but in my eyes, I think it would be good with restrictions, and it can interfere with her year-round business plan down, down at the fairboard grounds, because she's done such a good job of bringing this in. It would be part of what she's doing, not a dominating part.
We, um, we are ready and willing to work with you folks, and, uh, any way we can to, uh, open the doors for our horsemen and, uh, work with you folks to, um, add revenue.
You didn't say Carl, did you? I'm kidding, that's good. I'm supportive of the concept of this, I've got the same concerns as the others, mainly just to make sure that, uh, whatever the operation ends up being, it doesn't conflict with the other things that Denise and the fair board have got scheduled, and I'd also want to make sure that, we need to learn from our lessons of the past and where- And I'd also want to make sure that we need to learn from our lessons of the past and where this failed last time with the last company, make sure we don't follow that same path. I guess try and figure out as best we can what failed there and make sure it doesn't happen again. I'd also be comfortable, I mean, I think the full board should decide, but I'd leave it up to the Fair Board to work out the details with Denise and Mr. Boyd and the administrator's office and then bring back to us what the proposal is, knowing what everybody's concerns here are, is my opinion on it. Thank you.
John, you raise this. I think we're all pretty much, I'm going to concur then with Commissioner Alwell and Plachek, who didn't speak, but so quickly. In regard to that, not only does the conversation need to take between Mr. Boyd, the administrator's office, and Denise, but Denise, keeping in mind the existing contracts we have with the brides-to-be renting the American One facility, our Nightlights contract, our storage unit, and also, I know I asked you the question yesterday on the phone, is there a potential loss of revenue due to the possibility of not being able to store for the extended period of time? Or what are the implications there of the loss of revenue as well? But you were very good in answering my questions yesterday, and I appreciate that. I guess my final comment would be, I believe this unique project would bring revenue to our city and our county and with a very little risk. And we can attract thousands of peoples to our city, to our county, and add jobs as well. So I wish you well, Mr. Boyd, and I hope to see this process continue.
Thank you.
Excuse me. I think, remember, now we're in the driver's seat. I mean, we have control, we have the contracts, we know we can work around our commitments in this endeavor. The last time we were involved in this, if you don't remember, the same attorney represented both sides, the racing and the county, and screwed the county. So now we have control, so we can work these things out, I think. And I would like to have, you know, some more time to work on this, but I don't think, I think we've got enough details and stuff, we could probably proceed with the process.
It seems like, listening to you, you're certainly willing to take primarily the, let's just say, majority of the risk here, if we want to call it that. I agree with everyone else that Denise has a job to do. She has the schedule. She knows what she's looking forward to do. And certainly, we need to make sure that you can fit into that. And certainly, what Commissioner Alexander said and Commissioner Lightner and others, I certainly agree that the opportunity to address our number one strategic goal, which is the economy, economic development, certainly this is a part of that. So I would hope too, if we had a lease agreement, maybe this would help our administrator, if we had a lease agreement, we could clearly put in that lease agreement what Jackson County wanted to be part of and what Jackson County did not want to be part of. And I don't know why John, excuse me, Commissioner Plachek didn't answer his question, but he wanted to know if there was going to be dollar beer.
Well, and you're the one, I don't think there's going to be dollar beer. We actually intend to work, hopefully, with Denise and the possibility to do their charitable license. But it is a plan for the future. One thing I just, maybe I didn't do a very good job of saying, and I'll stop, but, you know, I truly believe that the opportunity isn't this year and race in five days. The opportunity is next year, race in 40 days. The opportunity is working with our legislature to create additional attractions, additional revenues. And you know, the racetrack, I tried to find out what the number was, but it was millions and millions of dollars in revenue that it created for Jackson County. And I believe that there's the opportunity moving forward to create a business that's an attraction for Jackson and create a revenue engine for Jackson County with future developments in the industry. So I know it looks like we're just trying to push the envelope for five racing days this year, but what we're really looking for is creating a business that's sustainable and then is an asset to the community and hopefully for a very long time can drive a lot of revenue. Thank you so much for the opportunity. It is greatly appreciated on behalf of the Michigan Horsemen, on behalf of my incorporation. I just thank you for the opportunity, and I will look forward to sitting down with Denise.
Did you have another question?
No, Commissioners, do you see, I had just mentioned that I had a conversation with Denise yesterday about the potential loss of revenues, existing contracts, what potential conflicts we may have and/or that we need to consider. Do you see value in having Denise speak to or address to that?
I think what would be valuable is to have a dialogue and have questions that have been asked already and answers that have already been given in an email format so that if anyone else wants to ask additional questions, we can have those prepared so that when Mike and the Fair Board sits down with them, we would have all the information upfront and be able to know what details they are working on so that if there are additional questions outside of that parameter, we would be able to ask them or at least get them to the right persons so that they could be answered.
Yes, sir.
I would like to see that Administrator Overton and Denise sat down, look at the fair schedule, some of the ideas Denise is working on or even has in the back of her head, and take care of her schedule first and then see if there's room left to try the racetrack with restrictions set by Denise and the administrator so we don't get stung somehow down the road. But it would be a piece of the fair property scheduling, not necessarily the centerpiece, be a piece, and it'd be just one more activity that she would have brought to Jackson through her management and all. So if she would sit down with the administrator, look at the overall picture over a 52-week basis and see how it would fit, and maybe it won't. Maybe it will. But not stall her momentum. She's probably got some brainstorms in the back of her head we haven't even heard about yet. And they may be bigger and better. We don't know. But sit down and discuss a schedule and what restrictions would need to be in place. And it might even be a three-way schedule, I don't know. But they need to talk first and bring it back to the board. Thank you.
Commissioner Lightner.
Sorry, I know this is going long, but I would be willing to shoot Denise an email with all the questions that I had and that Julie had with her answers because I don't want to keep bombarding her with the same questions, you know, each commissioner asking her. But I'd be willing to shoot that email off if she'd be willing to shoot the answers back to our whole board.
Okay, I think I have clear direction. I think I understand what the board wants us to do. They want us to look long and hard with this, see if we can make this work. What we will, what I want, and we'll say this, is part of the whole master plan process is the highest and best use for the property. We have 40-plus acres there, spin around for a long, long time. The highest and best use. That may not be what we're doing right now. It may not be the best, highest and best use. It may be horse racing. It may be a combination thereof. We need to explore that. My only concern was summer's upon us, and that's when the bulk of your racing, you know, sounds like. So we're going to have to move with haste if we need to do this. And putting the lease together, you know, that involves attorneys and costs, of course, but also time. So it just, but we're going to, we'll sit down and we'll talk about it. And we'll speak to the board as soon as we have more information, and I'll share it with the board. Thank you. I think up next is strategic plan reporting. Adam?
The strategic plan, strategic implementation team has discussed for a couple months now how to best present the strategic plans to the board. Over the last five years, we've been presenting as part of the retreat, and it's typically a lengthy session because you have seven goals that repeat or present for 15 to 20 minutes each, sometimes longer. So it becomes a lengthy session. And so the strategic implementation team talked about different ways. They looked at the potential of breaking it up by coming to committees, or where they settled on was a recommendation to present at study sessions each month. So you'd hear one to two of your strategic plan updates each study session. Each strategy would report twice a month, or twice a year. And so by the time you came around to the board retreat, you should be fairly up to date on each strategy rather than hearing it just once a year. And we still have some type of strategic direction at the retreat, where you want to go with that, reaffirming those things. But we're looking at more of an engaging presentation with you in our Friday meetings that are more relaxed, or we can talk about issues and aspirations and things like that with respect to each of those strands. So I was asked to bring that recommendation from the strategic implementation team to the board for your consideration.
Thank you, Adam. Any questions?
Card to that at all?
Okay. Next, we have airport runway project funding issue. I believe the last meeting or the meeting before that, I don't quite remember, Kent had reviewed with the board the significant cost increase, or I shouldn't say increase, or cost of removing the landfill, either off-site or on-site, but moving it, period, was somewhere $3 to $5 million anticipated. There's a lot of variables, a lot of moving parts in that, DEQ and so forth. I guess the question for myself and Adam in discussing how we're going to fund that, how we're going to pay the bill, is the options are pretty limited. You know, if we draw down on the existing accounts the county has, we will put ourselves in a situation where we may very well not make payroll at the end of the year, you know, may very well have to, you know, do tax anticipation notes or something like that because we're talking huge dollars there. We don't believe it's really a viable option to just say, well, we're not going to do it. We're not going to continue with the project. We don't see that really as viable either. There's been, you know, tens of millions invested in that property over the last, what, eight years, I believe they've been working on it. So we don't see that as really viable. And frankly, airports generate, again, economic development, a lot of economic development, a lot of economic activity, I should say. So we're left with borrowing the money. So it's a matter of how we go about borrowing it. Frankly, Adam and I, in discussions, we've, you know, looked at, you know, going to a bank or what do you do? We're thinking a bond would be appropriate. Interest rates are good. We can take a look at that. What I'm, I guess what I'm asking the board is, you know, the old head nod, we want to go ahead and start talking to bond counsel and some of those things to see, you know, what's involved, what's the timeline, and, you know, because we need to take care of this probably, well, we need to care of this this year so that we have the money available for next year when they do the project. So questions, concerns, or otherwise? If not, we're going to pursue the bond. Well, there's the deal. We don't really have a revenue stream coming out of the airport to fund the bond. The bond would have to be paid for general tax dollars at this point.
I would think what your idea is, is to go forward, look at it, and bring it back to the board?
Correct.
And you'd like direction to do that?
Correct, yes.
I think that makes sense. At least find out what the bill is.
We've had two meetings with the group that we're calling the Champions Group. And I would say two successful meetings, gaining support and willingness to participate in the project. And so we're just at the organization stage of it, but some effective things happened at the last one where we got tasks out, creating letters that need to go out to funders. There's a grant writer on board. And the chairman and I and Parks Chairman, Mike Way, feel pretty good about the team we've got together. And I should also say the Parks Director too, who would otherwise be here, but he's out of town right now. But the four of us have been very comfortable with the group that's together, and you'll see more information as well as names in the coming weeks. But I just wanted to let you know this is going well and that it's going forward.
Any questions?
Mike, are you ready?
Thanks. There was no questions. Okay, good. Thank you. Next up, we have Savoy. We want to talk about that. I do have an update in regard to Savoy. I think, as everyone knows, we've been waiting for some time to hear something from Savoy other than, you know, hearsay, if you will, and so forth. Savoy recently had requested permission to site a second well on that property. So with, in order to do that, they actually need us to approve the location of the well. That's really what it comes right down to. Per the agreement that's in place, they have the right to site a second well, but as the property owner, you could say, well, and I don't want it there, I want it there. But not that you can't say, I don't want it, period. That's really not any option. So with that said, I felt we had a little leverage and called Savoy and said, you know, we know you drilled a well, and we hear that you found oil, but we haven't seen anything in writing. We haven't heard anything much more than that, really. With that, Savoy has sent me a whole lot of documentation, of which I'd need a translator for some of. And Adam and I did go out there this week to the site, see where the well, this proposed second well is going to be. And actually, it's not even on the existing property. The actual, where they're going to drill the hole is in the adjacent neighbor's property. But the, as it's been described to me, the pond, as they refer to, the pool of oil is 80 acres, how this works. They said, we've identified about 80 acres of oil down there, pond. What they didn't do is they take a map, property map, and lay it over top of that pond and say, these properties all cover the pond. So every one of those property owners is entitled to a royalty, one-eighth. The county's portion of the pond of the 80 acres is 28 acres. So we would receive 28 80s of one-eighth of the royalties. That's how they do that. They split it up. Doesn't matter if the well's on the county's property or on the adjacent property, frankly. The current well is pumping oil. To be exact, when they first drilled it, it was dry. They said, we know there's oil there. We thumped this site quite a bit. We see this big pond of oil. How could we have missed it? So they drilled off down, they're about a mile under the ground, then they go sideways, if you will. Don't ask me to explain how they do it, but they do. Go down a mile, then go sideways. They hit the oil, they're pumping about 133, 130 barrels of oil a day. That translates into a consistent revenue of roughly $15,000 a month. They're allowed to take 200 gallons, 200 barrels a day. What they need to do that is a vertical well. That's why they want to have this second well. So if they go over into this one location where they believe, again, that- So if they go over into this one location where they believe, again, that they're right over top of the middle of the pond, they can go straight down and draw it straight up. And again, not knowing anything about oil wells, I'm learning, you know, I thought, you know, like a fuel tank, you go to the bottom and start drawing and everything settles down and you take the whole tank or the pond. That's not how it works. There's layers of earth and I guess we all understand that when you look at sediment and so forth, but there'd be a layer of clay. So, you know, you drilled through, you're down a mile or so, you pump all that oil out, you don't have to pump, it's under 1,400 pounds of pressure right now, so it's flowing freely out of the top. But once they've, that layer of oil has exhausted, they pull the pipe up, they may pull it up a foot or two or three, whatever it takes to get beyond the next layer of sediment that's blocking a whole nother layer of oil. And then they'll draw. So literally, they take the oil as they remove the pipe upward and ultimately will drain the whole pond of oil through that method. Typically, they believe the, or not, typically, an oil well, peak production, two to three years, then it starts to trail off over the next 12 with an average life of an existing of a well for about 15 years. With the 200 barrels per day, they anticipate our revenue, some, our share of the one-eighth or the 28 eighteenths of one-eighth would be roughly 20,000 to 25,000. 25 would be, you know, probably the more hopeful side. No, $25,000 a month. That's the revenue stream. And then, of course, again, that's the peak revenue stream at 200 barrels a day, probably the next two or three years, they figure. And then, of course, if it's the typical well, it starts to trail off over time. So that's the anticipated revenue there. We did receive our first check. The guy, when he asked me to sign the papers for the second well, I had told him, you know, I mean, you're pumping oil and you're selling oil, where's the money? You know, the county hasn't received a dime. He did hand me a check at that time for $37,389.62, which isn't the full amount, I think it's closer to 44, 45, but they hadn't sold all the, what they pumped, so. At any rate, that's, represents the royalty up to this point in time. And frankly, just keeping in mind that the county is, owns 28 acres, if you will, of the 80 acres, so the majority of the, of the oil royalties is going to the surrounding property owners there, just FYI. Yes, sir?
Mike, is there natural gas revenue also or not?
There is. They're pumping with that, of course, a lot of water, natural gas, and other compounds they have to separate, and they do sell. And the number that I'm quoting there was for the oil. He says that there, they'll meter it, once they separate it out and everything, and they'll meter it, and they, at this point, really weren't sure what it would add in value, nothing like the oil. He says the primary money is the oil. That's all secondary and it is what it is, they'll meter it and we'll receive a check on that. Same, same percentage methodology.
And same with liquids?
Yes, same with the liquids, yeah. Other questions? Otherwise, we will, we'll report as we receive new information. And I guess the question that's gonna be, of course, in the public's mind and in this board's mind, is where that oil revenue stream's gonna go. That'll be something the board to contemplate and think about. Myself, I would just tell you that I'd rather you keep it to a capital project as opposed to an operational thing because of, you know, it can come and go as fast. The well, you know, could diminish rather rapidly and next thing you know, you've got an operation funded by very much a diminishing revenue stream. So if you go to a capital item, those are one-time purchases. Yes, sir?
I guess if they're going to be putting the well on someone else's property, why do we? That's what I heard you say, right?
That's correct.
Then why do we have a say as to where that well's gonna go?
Well, I wondered about that myself. The pad, they say we need to set a second pad. Well, a pad is, it's what, 250-foot square? A bunch of that is on the county's property, a bunch on the other side. And frankly, they have to go talk to another property owner and get permission there as well to do, because it's just crossed the fence line, not very far, it's, I mean, literally right there, you could reach over, well, you can't touch it, but you could throw a rock at it for sure. Otherwise, we'll update you as information is available. We do have a closed session scheduled, a number of items there, litigation as well as union negotiations, so we will be looking for a motion to.